Getting hurt, you know?
This guy will be stunned out in the next couple of weeks. John is doing.
Is that already here?
It's two o'clock, August 25th, 2024. And I'm calling the special call committee of the whole meeting to order. First of all, I would like to thank our citizens and guests for attending today's meeting. This meeting, as others, is designed for working sessions with the city council members, working with the staff in reviewing, receiving, reviewing, and commenting on information presented during the meeting. Outside people may speak if permission is granted. I will remind citizens that they have an opportunity to come and speak before each council meeting during the public session. At this time, I would like to ask our city manager, Hilton Daniels, to proceed with business at hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Prochamp. Good afternoon, everyone. I have four items for you today. Number one is a bee ordinance, which basically is allowing the city to update our ordinance to to be congruent with what the state law allows. Right now, our rules are a little bit different in the state, so we just want to get make sure we're in compliance with those. The next is to start this discussion on social districting, which is areas that people of the age of 21 or above would be able to have open beverages in the districts. The third item is memorial for fallen officers. We received a request from Nash County, so I just want to get the conversation started about that. And then the last item is attorney-client privilege and personnel updates for you all. So with that said, we'll go ahead and start with the first presentation for the bee ordinance, and I think Joseph is going to handle it first.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
As the manager introduced, this item is an amendment to the city code, which basically will bring the city into compliance with state statute around the keeping of bees, honeybees. Our ordinance currently restricts honey, keeping of bees only on agricultural properties, properties that are zone A1 here in Rocky Mount, whereas state statute pretty much states that any parcel of land should be a potential home for a honeybee. There's been an interest in keeping of bees around the city. On occasion, I've personally been contacted, our department has been contacted about having bees in Rocky Mount. And there are, if you've been around and seen them, there are existing hives that we have permitted or allowed in Rocky Mount. Given the opportunity, the proposed standards that I'll share with you, we shared with those owners of those hives. So expecting that one day we could be these rules in place, they would be complied. The proposed amendment does align with best practices. We did consult with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. They have staff who is assigned to different regions across the state, and we reached out to that local staff person at the state for guidance. The proposed rules also obviously are aligned to promote public safety as well. The Rocky Mount Police Department Animal Services Unit would be responsible for the permitting of the bee hives, and that permit would align with permits and fees that are required for the keeping of other animals here in the city. A property would be allowed up to five hives. If it's a larger lot, they are allowed an additional hive for every five thousand square feet of property that they have. The hives would not be allowed to be placed in front yards. They'd have to be a certain distance from the property lines and a certain distance from any adjacent residents. There are also safety measures in place, barriers for flyways, onsite water source for the bees themselves. And we're also going to require an annual inspection. Results of an annual inspection, again, performed by the State Department of Agriculture, would be provided to Animal Services Unit to ensure that those apiaries or bee hives are being maintained in a safe manner. If they are not, then we would have the hives removed, either by the owner or done by Animal Services. So that's pretty much what's proposed in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions. This will come before you at a future.
Yeah, if council is okay with what we're presenting here, then we'll have it at the next meeting in September.
Do that include rooftop bees?
Yes, yes, it would allow for keeping of bees on a roof or at ground level. The proposed regulations do just state that it has to be on a stable, secure foundation.
These are for artificial hives, not for them, if they just create their own.
Right.
Well, they've violated city ordinance.
That's right. I just want to make sure we're not responsible. Because I had this, but they're in my front yard, I don't have to worry about coming to you because they got there before I did. Thank you.
Just see who will forgive me.
I would just like to make a comment. The honeybee event at the Event Center several Saturdays ago was a terrific event. And I just want to congratulate the city and all the partners who put that exhibit together. It was very educational.
It was well attended. I attended with my family, and they learned a lot. We learned a lot. Again, it's so much stuff out there that we didn't know, all that information, it was kind of overwhelming. But there's a whole group of people on Rocky Mountain that's looking forward for this change.
I'm sure you mentioned this, and I'm a little late, and I apologize for that. How did this even come up? My dad kept bee hives in our backyard since I was eight until he died. And clearly, we were violating the ordinance. My father was. I wonder if this should be the Sandy Law or something.
Just really recognizing.
We weren't alone.
Yeah, that we're out of compliance with what state statute allows. Just recognize that with, again, I mentioned lots of interest from the public in keeping bees. We needed to get the change made.
And I will add to that, we had several people contact the city manager's office, especially after we advertised the bee event. We were made aware of that.
Okay, so created a little interest in, okay.
No objections, I guess we'll move forward with proceeding with that for the September meeting.
Thank you.
The next assistant city manager, Hill, is going to give a presentation with regard to the social district.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Nikki Hill, Assistant City Manager. So, social districts were authorized in North Carolina by the General Assembly back in 2021, and they are defined as areas where folks who are legal drinking age can openly consume alcoholic beverages in a defined area. Some of the key requirements of social districts, we have to adopt a local ordinance. Businesses that participate, the ABC permitted businesses that participate have to have labeled drink containers. They have to be non-glass and no larger than 16 ounces. We have to have regulated hours. Typically, you see anywhere from as early as 10:00 a.m. to as late as 11:00 p.m. There must be clear rules. There must be boundary signage, and on that signage, we must have the hours and also law enforcement contact information. There must also be a maintenance and management plan, which includes these rules, sanitation plan, how businesses opt in to participating, as well as information about rules and regulations, like I said. So, private property owners, if they want to establish a social district, they must work directly with the ABC Commission.
Excuse me, Ms. Hill, they must work through, I couldn't quite understand.
They must work directly with the ABC Commission.
Okay, thank you.
So they don't have to come through us.
So just want to make sure our audience understands that. Thank you.
So they, for clarification, that'd be someone else.
Yep.
Which I think they've already done that.
Yep.
Over there by hotels, if they wanted to do something, that would be directly to ABC.
Yep. Exactly.
It is an area of crap, right? So this is like used by rights according to the district? Do we define the district?
We define the district.
We define the district, then once we define the districts, then that's when they work with the state?
Oh, I'm sorry. We define our district on our public right of ways. They define their district on the private properties. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll add a little bit to it, for example.
We'll get a little bit into it later on in the presentation. But, so, the benefits and the challenges of social districts. So increased foot traffic, business revenue, and also enhance attendance at special events. Some of the challenges include increased litter, the need for more sanitation services, and then also compliance with the rules and regulations. So, staff did desktop research as well as site visit research to make sure that we knew what the best practices were in terms of implementing our social district successfully. And what we were able to determine is a robust stakeholder engagement approach is needed to make sure that folks are well aware of what the social district is, what the requirements are, and also to make sure that we get the support from the community. So municipalities that actually do KPIs for their social district, like Hickory, noticed a 13.6% increase in foot traffic for their special events. And Raleigh, the business owners in their downtown reported a very positive impact to their business and also very supportive of having the district there in Raleigh. And also, communities did not report any increased incidents of crime related to the social district. So we actually also did site visits, and we went out to several municipalities that are in close proximity to Rocky Mount who have social districts. And you'll see, we made some observations about the city signage, the business signage, and also the hours of operation. And overall, most of the municipalities had an average of about eight participating ABC permitted businesses. We saw as high as 14 participating businesses, which was in Greenville. And generally speaking, some of the challenges, the city signage oftentimes was small, absent, and in one situation, it was, in a lot of situations, it was poorly positioned, but in one specifically, the city signage was completely absent, which is in violation of the state law. The business signage was inconsistent, hard to see at times. And also, overall, we found that in conversations with other communities and in our observations, there was a limited knowledge of social districts. So people either weren't aware of social districts, or if they were, they didn't know exactly what they were or what the requirements were. So all of this, so, you know, this research, and then also getting into the current state of Rocky Mount landscape helps to inform the recommendation that staff is going to present. So, the core downtown of Rocky Mount, we have several ABC permitted businesses, and we have some of them coming in the pipeline. And a fourth one that's not on the deck is a Vietnamese restaurant that's going to be locating next to Bustin' a Gut. But what we notice overall with the current core downtown and our ABC permitted businesses is that many of them have limited hours earlier in the week, and then several of them have late night hours that go well beyond your typical social district hours. So based on the current landscape and staff research, we are recommending a strong stakeholder engagement process. We want to survey downtown businesses and property owners. We want to host meetings, and we also want to make sure that we engage the churches in downtown, the interest groups in downtown, and the residents. We want to make sure that we are building trust, educating the community, and also ensuring that we are transparent. In terms of signage, we want to make sure that we have big, bold signage like Smithfield did. And we want to have a large district map. District maps are required, but oftentimes, we saw that the maps were really small. So we want to have a large district map with a "you are here" indicator so folks know how to navigate around the social district. We want to add sidewalk decals so that folks can clearly see what the boundaries of the social district are. Similar to Greenville, they had large signage for their businesses, so we want to do the same here and actually provide that. Greenville did not provide that to the businesses. Tarboro, they had a really good icon that they used on their branding, which kind of helped to indicate that the social district is related to alcohol, because if you just hear the name "social district," you might not know exactly what that's related to. And so also, we want to encourage businesses to provide information inside of their establishments to educate people on what social districts are. In terms of launching, we would like to start with an initial boundary, which we'll show in subsequent slides. And then we want to expand as downtown grows and we have success with the social district. We need to have a robust campaign that we launch along with the holiday to help kind of generate interest. And then to maximize the hours that our downtown businesses are open, we want to operate the social district daily from 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. So this is the boundary that we are proposing. If you see in yellow, it encompasses the core downtown and many of our ABC permitted businesses. So the yellow is the initial boundary that we want to propose, and then the orange is the expansion area. Once we realize success, once businesses expand, we'd like to have council consider expanding social districts. To the left, you'll see here the list of ABC permitted businesses within the initial boundary. This is just a street view of those establishments. So you have Washington Street and Tarboro Street. You have Thomas Church and Southeast Main Streets here as well. So in terms of implementation, we are recommending an expedited timeline. So we would start in September with stakeholder engagement, meeting with the community, and developing our branding. We've come back to council at some point for them to approve that local ordinance, as well as the management plan. We'd also be working on the design for the signage. And then we'd have to submit the ordinance and the management plan to the North Carolina ABC Commission, begin marketing and promoting the social district, and we'd also be working to install the signage with an expected launch of October 31st, 2025 Halloween. And that concludes the presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Any questions, Councilman Daltch?
I think some special attention, especially on a Saturday night, following into a Sunday morning for the churches downtown, because we have quite a few churches on Main Street and then on Church Street. You need to, I think, make sure that the trash is picked up, just out of respect. Well, make sure trash is picked up in general, but certainly on a Sunday. I happen to go to school in Charleston, South Carolina, which is downtown. And the school required, and it was mainly the students and stuff, but the school required us to have everything cleaned up for Sunday. They were really strict about that. And I think we should consider something very similar to that, because it would not be a good look to show up at church and have trash, you know, hopefully we won't have any, to have trash everywhere. Sorry, this is my initial comment.
I think. Councilman Walker?
Yeah. Councilman Daltch, I think they're part of that stakeholder engagement, so it might be something just to note, dude, that the churches are all part of that stakeholder engagement, so I'm sure they'll.
As a stakeholder that goes to a downtown church, I'm mentioning it now.
I'm sure they'll probably second your sentiments. I'll save this comment, because I think it's for a broader, just, well, it might be finer, but you mentioned it earlier about how we were going to incorporate sanitation, and I know we had conversations with Wilmington about how we were going to try to help support that. So that's probably for another greater conversation. Appreciate the presentation.
And we are in conversations with parks and, they have the contract for the folks who handle sanitation in downtown. And so just to, you know, make sure that y'all are aware, we plan to make sure that if there needs to be an increase in collection service, more bins and stuff placed out, and more litter pickup, that that's going to be a part of the sanitation plan. And we'll bring that to you because you all have to approve that as a part of the maintenance and management plan.
I did, and my last, thank you, and this is going to be my last point, but how is this going to work in conjunction with the Event Center, and does that? Okay, you got some.
So, we're proposing that the Event Center right here is in the initial boundary. And so if there are special events there, you know, folks can, as they leave that event and walk downtown, they can participate in the social district.
Got you. I just, does that work the same from exterior to interior, or just interior to exterior?
So yes, they can bring their drinks inside, and if they have drinks on the inside, they can bring them outside, as long as it's a participating business. And obviously, we would be participating because it's our Event Center.
Okay.
Now, I want to be clear, that doesn't mean that you can't bring your alcohol from home. You would have to purchase special.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, you can't bring your cooler and bring somebody to sit in the district. You have to purchase that alcohol from the.
I was with you on that. I know the Event Center currently, you know, very particular about your purchase at the Event Center is your purchase inside that facility. So I didn't know if they were going to be participating as well, because now that.
They will be. They will have decals on their cups, and so the people who purchase the drinks from the inside would be able to walk outside with it. And they actually already have, not necessarily tested with alcohol, but tested it with just their food, because they've set up an outdoor area from time to time. I don't know if you've seen the booths out there, so they have it in place, they just haven't had the alcohol portion yet.
Got it. And I didn't want it to be an operation thing between them, but I'm sure y'all are going to have that conversation with them, because I know for them, I mean, it's more beneficial, you know, they're selling alcohol, they want to keep the percentage of those sales, but I'm sure y'all will have a greater conversation with them, you know. Thanks for the presentation.
Councilman Daltch?
Yeah, I hope that we be mindful that we don't create another cost for our citizen with sanitation piece. I hope that some way that we make sure that this can pay for itself and not pass that cost on to the citizen.
So, noted, and I will mention that when we were in conversations with other municipalities, the bulk of the cost that they did see in terms of increase was around signage. And we do have our own signs dropped, so I expect costs to be minimal. In terms of the litter and sanitation, again, we'll put that as part of the plan. But I did not hear, we did not hear from our contacts that that was a huge issue. But we will be prepared nonetheless.
Councilman Walker?
I think you, city manager, kind of answered, but I guess you were saying the decal, I guess, would that only be for the Event Center itself? I go to CJ's, where I get like a special van for the social district, where I can kind of, will it change for the day if that makes sense?
So every participating ABC permitted business must use a clear cup, no greater than 16 ounces, and it has to be labeled, and on that label, they have the name of their establishment and the date they poured that drink. And so once you leave that establishment, you can take that drink anywhere within the boundaries of the social district within another participating business. You can't, but once you leave that district, you got to get rid of that drink. You can't take it out of the dish, and you can't use your cup across multiple days. That's why you will have the date on those decals.
I'll just ask that, because I know in Houston, that's how they was doing it. Like, you know, you got a van, you can kind of float around, and the van was for that date. So like, TJ's have some, they were using a blue van, J. Kelly's going to use a red, just something like that. But y'all got to figure it out, I would just.
And we will have vans when we have like special events, like at the city is hosting something or the Event Center is hosting something, and we would have like a van to show everybody. Basically, the vans are to show that you are above age, so you don't have to keep going back and forth. So yeah.
I guess that's why they was using the van instead of the cup.
That's correct.
Councilman Blackwell?
I just want to reiterate that we do need more sanitation like now. We've been making concerns about that, and we found out that they're sort of uneven collection strategies right now. And that's not a good look for anybody sitting, yeah, anytime, you know. So I'm happy to hear that we'll have increased trash pickup. And I'm assuming, just want to go back through that process again. Once we define the boundaries, then what's the role of the state?
We submit as a part of our overall plan, our ordinance and our management plan, which will include the boundaries, we have to submit that to the ABC Commission.
Okay, and then the ABC Commission decides yes or no?
So that's a really good question. So when I reached out to contacts to find out, like, do they give you an official approval? I got mixed responses. Some of them said they heard back, and some of them said they never heard back. And so my takeaway from that is, once council adopts the ordinance and we have record that we submitted, then it's approved, because they haven't disapproved any.
And so this social district is our effort as a city of Rocky Mount to promote downtown and designate downtown as a safe place to walk and drink and purchase. But if there is another area, for example, I know in Cary, for example, there's a collective of restaurants and condos. This is sort of like a shopping area, and they.
You talking about Fenton?
Fenton, yes. And they have very clear signage and some understanding about. So they're able to do that without coming to the city if somebody.
Right, because that is their private property.
Right.
And they work directly with the ABC, the North Carolina ABC Commission, to establish their social district.
Yeah. So to that point, I've had a number of businesses at the Gateway Convention Center area asking if they could be part of a social district. Do they require a social district definition, or do they fall in the category of what Ruben was talking about?
I mean, they are social districts, but they're private social districts. And so again, they don't have to work through the city to establish it. They just work through the ABC Commission to establish it.
Sorry, that was, it just segued beautifully.
Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, because I was saying, fresh in my head.
Councilman Walker?
Yeah, I think their issue has been the state has sent them back to us.
Really? Okay.
So I don't know where the confusion is, but the mills process, that because that was, because I remember that coming for us as well, so what was the difference in that?
Yeah, I can follow up with ALE contact, but when I posed that question to them, they said that the private property owner works directly with the North Carolina ABC Commission. But I can follow up to get clarity on that since there's some confusion.
And what I would recommend too, if that's an area that you all have been hearing for, then when we come back for the recommendation of our designated area, if you want to include that in that portion, that makes it easier, then, you know, you all have the right to do that as well.
I for one have heard a lot from that, virtually every single one of those businesses, and I can't be alone. I see lots knocking others, nodding their heads.
To, to you.
My word.
Friendly was mine, so I think.
I'm good. I mean, I support it. I support wherever it can be contained. And, and I do, I think that when the mill came up, there was an issue about crossing streets. So is that not an issue with us anymore?
No.
Okay.
Um, let me kind of go back to the private property. When was this issue? When was this an issue with Rocky Mount Mills? What year was that?
About two years ago.
Yeah, I think we voted on it. It might have been a little, might, might have been two years.
About two years ago.
Okay.
And I think they did want to contain it well, the guidance we received, I think, if I'm correct. And our attorney wasn't here then, but you might want to follow up. But I think that our guidance was that you have to keep it contained within one area. You could not cross streets with cups.
Okay.
At that time. I don't know what has changed.
State roads or maybe.
State roads, yeah.
There may be some distinction even on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was, that was then. I don't know.
Yeah. You definitely can cross the street, because as an example, our street, now for Rocky Mount Mills, maybe it's different because they're private property, and so people would be crossing a public street once they leave that private property.
And it's state maintained.
Mm-hmm, and state maintained, exactly. But for our social district, because it's public, right away, public property, then there is no issue. Because obviously, once you step outside of an establishment, your own public property, right? So obviously, it would be hard to manage a social district if people weren't able to cross the streets in our downtown, within those boundaries.
Maybe what we should do is put in touch with you, so y'all can have a conversation with this. Represent this various businesses there.
Is it, is it Gateway?
Yes.
Okay. Any others?
Mill's already been done. That's the only.
I hear that, and I hear from the event center, those are the only two places I've been hearing from.
So the event center is in ours. It will be in ours once council approves. And if you give me contact information for the folks at Gateway, I don't mind working directly with them.
Thank you.
It can be hard sometimes, though, to get, to, to get in contact with folks related to, you know, ABC, whether it's ALE or the North Carolina ABC Commission, but I'll do my best to work with them to get answers for them.
Sure. Councilman Blackwell?
Just one more question. So what would be our public education process? Because that's the other thing, I think.
Yeah. So what we are looking to do, and I'm working with the folks and comms, this, I believe it's the, the week of the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, that's when we want to start those listening sessions and those meetings with the different stakeholders. So we're going to send out mailings to the, all of downtown churches and property owners and business owners that are within a five hundred foot radius of the initial boundary, and invite them to meetings that are tailored specifically to them as an audience to talk about the social district. So the fifteenth, I believe, is business owners, and it's going to be at noon. The sixteenth is in the evening, and I think that's for like special interest group in churches. And then on the seventeenth, it'll be open to just anyone. And I believe that one's at five thirty as well. And we're going to have in-person and virtual, so it'll be a hybrid process. And so that'll be our opportunity to meet with them, to talk with them, to answer questions. And then in addition to that, we're going to do obviously a social media campaign, put information on our website. Grant, what are the other things that we're thinking about, don't in terms of communication?
I think certainly there'd be a video campaign or something, but the traditional channels you've seen, we've been successful for with the Honeybee and other ones, we're just not going to reinvent that, right? So we'll just continue the same kind of where we're reaching everyone through mailers, through traditional methods, but also where we meet people that are more advanced.
And assuming that if it gets through council and the council adopts it as an ordinance, as an approach, what we have like FAQs to publish in restaurants or participating businesses, so people know what rules are or how we'll.
Yeah. So we are required to have a website with all the information on including the management plan and the FAQ. So we'll have our website, but I think on one of the slides I mentioned, yeah, right here, encouraging participating businesses to display information inside their establishment. So like you said, the FAQ, the rules, the regulations, and making sure people are safe as they're participating in the social district. So that's definitely something that we want to do. And just so folks are aware, businesses have to opt in. So just because they're in the footprint of the social district does not mean that they have to participate.
And opting in means they have a contact at City Hall?
Right, exactly. We'll, we'll establish a process for them to say, hey, we want to participate. And then we'll make sure that that information, all the information is available to them in terms of the rules, the regs. We'll give them decals. We'll give them signage. We'll put their name on our website. And then if they want to opt out, obviously, we'll make sure that they are not listed on the website.
Is there a permitted fee, or is there, are there permits? So we're not establishing individual permits?
No, sir.
Or we're just saying you're participating?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle, for public information, come eleven PM, you can't take that cup outside of the establishment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, until people become familiar with the rules, et cetera, there's going to probably be an initial period of time. How is that going to be handled? Is it the business owner or somebody at the restaurant, bar telling them, you can't go out is past eleven PM? But they can, but can someone take their own personal beverage and walk out?
No, they cannot.
Right. They can't do that at any time.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but what I'm saying is, people with that special cup, eleven PM curfew really has got to be noticed and published. People got to understand, come eleven PM, inside.
Exactly, yeah. And, and we'll make sure, especially as we launch this, because we have Sergeant Derek Cooper, who is a part of our police force, and he's also the, the alcohol-related law, the alcohol law enforcement officer who knows all of the, the rules and the regs as it relates to alcohol. He's going to be, or he is a part of our team. And so he's going to be very vigilant with his team to make sure that folks are compliant. We'll make sure to get that information to the businesses that are opting in. And I think we, we just need to make sure that when we launch this, that we have a concerted intentional police effort to make sure that folks are compliant.
If someone is participating and there's outside seating, like the event center's got outside seating, can they still participate after eleven PM in their, in their domain?
No. Once they're on the, in a public area, in our public streets, our sidewalks.
Don't we have some businesses that got some outside? Lazer's got a couple of tables outside, did they not?
But those are our sidewalks.
So that's what I'm getting at. Can you participate after eleven PM?
I believe, I believe, I believe they close at eleven.
Well, but somebody else.
You mean they have to get rid of?
You want a drink on the, and drink on the street.
If they're sitting at a table, is that what you mean?
Yeah, sitting at a table.
If they're sitting at a table.
Outside.
And they have a drink, yeah, they can drink that drink.
Right. But you can't walk with it.
But they can't like walk around.
That's all I, I'm asking for people who are looking in or will be looking in to kind of understand it's all about education, education and awareness.
Yeah, and somebody sitting outside at an establishment is probably going to have, they're eating. They're probably going to have like a glass, right? But if they are participating in the social district, they're going to have a cup.
Right.
That is labeled. And so if they start walking around after eleven with that cup, it's going to be easy to see that they are non-compliant.
But they can still sit at the table after eleven is what I'm getting at. That's what I was trying to get at.
Councilman TJ Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Tim. And this is just, these hours are just for the summation and the lunch, right?
Yes.
They may be extended down the road.
They could be later, they could be earlier, up to.
Yeah, they can be as late as, be as late as two AM. But I wouldn't recommend that. That, one of the things that in our research that we found, we didn't find any municipality that went beyond eleven PM.
Gotcha. Councilman Jordan?
What is the fines if you are walking after eleven with a cup in the district?
There's no fine. You'd just be asked to discard of your beverage. There's no fine.
So the person, don't do anything what you do.
And that's a law enforcement issue likely to, you know, result in maybe an arrest.
Any other questions?
Well, we're excited about this, and we look forward to the results of these sessions you can be conducting and see how this just goes. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the final opening session item, we have Donald, who's going to give a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
As the manager indicated, I'm here to talk about a request from the Nash County Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department made application to the NC DOT to name the bridge at the intersection of US Highway sixty-four and US Highway three oh one in honor of fallen deputy Jared Allison. The requirement of that application is that the local governing body of the bridge's location approve a resolution to support the bridge naming. Subsequently, the Nash County Sheriff's Department submitted a request to the city to approve a resolution in support of the bridge naming. Deputy Allison was involved in a collision at the intersection of US three oh one and May Drive while on active duty on the night of Thanksgiving twenty twenty. Deputy Allen sustained severe injuries and tragically succumbed to those injuries December first, twenty twenty. Now, some data on bridge naming locations. Rocky Mount has a total of forty-eight NC DOT bridges. However, there are approximately five unnamed bridges remaining that I would consider significant. Rocky Mount has a total of six bridges that are already dedicated. Now, some options for your consideration, you can approve the request as submitted. You can erect a stone monument memorial or a wall-type monument memorial in a highly visible location such as Battle Park, MLK Junior Park, or Sunset Park. And with that, I'll take any questions or discussion.
Go back to the alternatives. And the reason that I, that I asked Donald to provide some alternatives, I just didn't know, being that we only have a limited number of bridges in the city, if council's going to be your discretion to, to dedicate that for as the request as it is. But just want to provide option A, B, and option C, so if you decide.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Walker?
Can you name the parks again?
These are just some suggestions that I thought of that were highly visible locations. And they would be Battle Park, MLK Junior Park, or Sunset Park. That's just suggestions to think about.
Anybody else have any questions or thoughts? Councilman Blackwell?
I really like the idea of the monuments, you know, because I hate to think, but it could happen again. And we wouldn't want to not confer honor to anyone and to any family. I really like the idea of a place somewhere in our city that we could honor that. And is there no room to do that, or would it be inappropriate? We got the Veterans Memorial down here. Is that inappropriate to mix that? It's the two sort of paramilitary, not necessarily veterans.
I wouldn't say it's inappropriate, but I do know that we have another location that was dedicated just recently where the flag on, at Sunset Park. We have two locations there, and the idea there, since it's kind of like the title of the park is Sunset, you know, when they say an officer is born and then sunset, and then we could actually have the flag that's out there at half-mast if we were to do some type of dedication. So that would be my recommendation, if that's the route that you all want to go, because it's very highly visible. And unfortunately, if we do have another incident with one of our own officers, we could just dedicate it to that specific area. But being that the veteran park is just veterans, I personally would recommend that we leave that alone, but try to find some other place of significance to honor our fallen officers.
Plenty of parks.
There?
I had a question. So what, what would be the process, or is it even possible to, if you wanted to name an intersection, i.e. have out three oh one and May, May Drive, is, is there a process to name that intersection? I mean, I understand the hesitancy about, you know, such a prominent bridge, and, and this is, and a deputy, we want to honor him. I want that to be clear. I think that's, I think that's everybody's intent around the table. But, but is that a process? Is that something that could be a reasonable alternative as well?
There's something that we could definitely check into and can get back with you all.
I like the monument, by the way. I think that's an awesome idea. I like Sunset Park. I mean, City Lake Two is another prominent park, but I don't.
Yeah, for us, if it was a, if it was a street that the city owned, you know, that's an easier process, because that would just show you all. However, if it's a state, state road, then obviously we'd have to go through NC DOT.
Have we talked with the sheriff's office about other alternatives, or is this internal?
This was internal to us at this point, because we wanted to get direction from the council. And then once we get that direction, we can, we can let the sheriff know where we, where we stand.
Councilman Jordan?
I think if we had something that would be significant, as significant as a veteran memorial park monument, I think it would really, really be great to honor all of our fallen officers. If we had something that had that type of significance to it.
Councilman Daltch?
If we're, I would like to, if we're going to talk about a monument, I'd like to expand it not to all public safety.
Yeah, sure.
Because, you know, we have things with the fire department as well. And I think it would be appropriate, if we were going to do that, to have like a public safety type.
DMAs, please, yeah.
So just my two cents.
If I may, would I add to that? We're, we're talking about public safety officers that actually die on duty, not just someone who's worked for the city or someone and passed away later, but someone who's active duty and, and get injured and.
Correct.
Okay.
From my perspective, yes.
And just, just one more something to think about is that for the MLK memorial and for the Veterans Memorial, those were really community-led, fundraised. So this is a different, this is a different issue, you know, about cost. And that that's not an, it's not an issue, but I'm just saying that that's something else to consider, that the other parks were dedicated parts to remember someone in particular. And so there were activities, fundraising activities that went along to ensure, working with the city, that, that there was support for and financial support. And if we did something in an existing park, that's a little shift and a little change. And perhaps the cost would not be as great. That's the other part I want to say. Because both for veterans and for MLK, it was taking it from scratch and creating something. And here, we're talking about adding something to what's already there. And I'm not opposed, okay, I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to. And I'm not opposed, okay, I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to looking at a bridge memorial, but I am concerned about going forward if other officers lose their lives in the course of duty. What can we do to support their remembrance as well?
Well, I mean, I think we ought to point out Officer Driver doesn't have a bridge, you know?
Right, that's right.
He was on duty for us and whatever we need to consider him as well, I think in that, this whole conversation.
Right. Thank you.
That's all we have for, if there's any, are there any more questions? So I think what I'm here for, for this is to try to get some community, uh, input, uh, on this process. And then, uh, also get some, some costs associated with it and figure out what we can do.
But I just want to make, make clear that it could be an Edgecombe County. Public safety person, Nash County, or some other representative who unfortunately loses his or her life while on duty inside the city limits of Rocky Mount, is that correct?
Yeah. Got you. All right, thank you. That's all that I had, uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor Potem for our open session. Uh, we do have a couple of items for, uh, closed session.
Are there any other items publicly anyone would like to bring up? Do we have a recommendation that we move into closed session for returning client purposes and personnel purposes?
So maybe.
All approved? Okay, we will now move into closed.